Is, uh, what is today's date? Uh, August 4th, 2025. And, uh, let's get started and we have a quorum. We have two, three, four, five, six. And so that makes a quorum. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna go to public comment. We have any public comment? We need to make public comment? You want me to read all this out? And do we have any public comment?
Not for this section, no.
But you want me to read it anyway, don't you? Go after it.
Do we have to read it?
It's alright.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Item number three, regular gen- uh, regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellates are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Do we have a, uh, public? Anybody gonna speak to that? That's new to me.
Yes, it's just changing the verbiage a little bit.
Okay.
That might be new because we changed the way that we post the agendas. There might be some new blurbs in there that you see.
Okay. I didn't do my homework, did I? Don't go on it. I'm failing already. Alright. Let's consider the minutes from last month's meeting of July 7th, 2025. Do zoning board of adjustments. Has everybody looked at them? Any comments? Not letting any here motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's motions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved from July 7th, 2025. B, ZBA 25-07, 1302 Kenwood. A request for approval of variance from section 501.8 for a five-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required 20 feet for an addition to a studio residence at 1302 Kenwood Drive within the single-family residential RS1 zoning district. Hello, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Austin Reed, Senior Planner. This one comes to you out of the Santa Rita neighborhood. It is in District Number Five, Karen Hesse Smith's district. The zoning for this property is RS1. The vision plan holds it to be neighborhood and it's about .24 acres. Uh, what we have, as you mentioned, is a request for approval of a five-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required 20. So we sent out 22 notices. As of today, we received three that were in favor and none who were opposed. Under our staff analysis, um, the variance, the reason for it, they're trying to expand the structure to the rear off of the alleyway. We do think that there are special circumstances because this was originally built as a church. Um, it's since been used as an art studio and a residence. They recently got approval to use it as an art studio. Um, we think that this addition would allow the structure to be used more comfortably as a residence as it is in a residential district. Uh, we also think that littler interpretation would deprive the applicant of commonly enjoyed rights because if you look, some of the surrounding properties also lie pretty close to the alleyway. Um, so all in all, we were able to find that the necessary criteria for granting a variance could be met. Here's a look at the site plan or concept plan. If it helps anyone, the alleyway is off there to the right and then that hatched area is the addition. Um, they do still have five feet on either side and they have that proposed five feet in the rear. And here's a photo, um, of the back where the addition will be. This is, uh, on the outside of the alleyway on Avenue I looking inwards. With that, we are recommending approval. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Reed and the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? I'm gonna speak to this.
Is there any public comment on this one?
I think we have a couple.
Okay.
We can start with-
I'm gonna open public comment.
Liz Landers. You don't have to speak, but if you'd like to, you can.
Oh, wait a minute.
Step on up.
Hold on, hers is, I think, three C. Hold on. I'm sorry, I told you along the way. I thought this one was-
Okay.
So no public comment on this one?
We still have one. Um, Jamal Shumpert, if you'd like to speak.
Come on up, Jamal, just take your name and tell us what's going on.
Jamal Shumpert, 2817 North Urban Street. Uh, I would be in favor of this, but I will tell you, those six things that y'all have to go by to approve of this, it's kinda hard to approve of this doing it. Uh, I would still be in favor of it regardless. It's just that those six things maybe need to be-
I'm so sorry, I can't understand.
Okay, maybe-
Can you take a little closer to the microphone?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, those, those six criteria that y'all using to, to approve this, I think it maybe should be tweaked a little bit more. Uh, maybe look at planning to tweak it a little bit more because it, it sorta falls under that, but it doesn't. Regardless, I'm in favor of it because I believe they should be able to start a, a business there. But I also was wondering if you could require them, because it is a business, if y'all could require them to purchase the alley at a much discounted rate, uh, for parking. Uh, maybe that's something that planners should do or maybe that should be put into the ordinances. But I know you guys can't require anything like that. But, uh, maybe that should be something that planning and them should look at. That way, you know, nobody has to worry about ownership of the alley or them using the alley or residents complaining about the alley. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comment.
Any more public comment? And I'm gonna close public comment. Alright. Board discussion, or we'll go to a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept.
And I will second it.
Motion to accept in a second. Call for the vote unless there needs to be any more discussion by the board. Alright, let's go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there being none, passes six zero. Item, uh, C, ZBA 25-09, 717 Montecito Drive. Request for approval of a variance from section 501.8 for a maximum floor area ratio of 50% in lieu of the required 40% for new residents in the single-family RS1 zoning district. Hello, Ray.
Good afternoon, Ray Lineberry, Lead Planner. This is, this case was tabled last month at the request of some neighbors. Um, they have provided some written opposition that I have passed around. But this is in the Santa Rita neighborhood, District Five, Karen Hesse Smith. It is zoned RS1 with the vision plan being neighborhood. It is .161 acres and it is a request for a maximum floor area ratio of 50% instead of the required 40%. Um, we did mail out 19 notices and obviously we have three in opposition that we were not aware of when I did this slide. Um, this is the site plan that they provided. Um, as it is a, I believe it's a 3,450 square foot home. Um, that's what it would look like on the lot. And it does meet all the setbacks. It is just, uh, the size for the lot.
Can you go back, Ray? So how far? This is the front, correct?
Yes.
The back, the back is what we're talking about, right?
No, we're talking about the size of the house.
The size, where's, where's the encroachment? At the, there's a setback of what, 30?
There is no setback issue. We are talking about the actual size of the house.
The size of the house compared to the size of the lot.
Okay, and the five-foot setbacks are good?
Yep.
And so the backyard is where the problem is? Rear yard?
No.
No, it's technically the size of the house ratio compared to the size of the lot.
Okay.
Yes.
Make sure we're speaking into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
Gary.
Yes.
You're in the room, oh.
You had to spank me at least once today, right?
So it is the size of the house. It is a 3,450 square foot house and it can only be 40% of the lot and that covers up more than the lot. So the property is zoned RS1 with the lot size of 6,992 and, which is bigger than the required minimum of an RS1 lot. Um, 40% is 2,796 and they're building a 3,450. So the lot is not unusually shaped or slope. Um, the lot is already larger than the minimum required for RS1. So with that, staff does not find a hardship and is recommending denial.
So there's, the size of the house, 40%, I get that. With, with all the, but the size of the house are not, they're not encroaching on anything?
So according to the size of the lot-
Yeah, always that.
It would be a 2,800 square foot home.
Yeah.
Maximum.
I don't think I've ever run into this without having some kind of encroachments. I don't think I've ever run into anything like this with there not being any encroachments involved. Because the house is too big, it's too, uh, close to the rear property line or whatever. But anyway, first time for everything, I guess. Alright, move on, please.
Okay, is there any questions? No?
Is that lot, is that lot the same size of the other lots around it?
Um, when I went out there and looked, let me try to go back for a second to this one. So most, most of the other lots are the standard, maybe just a little bit larger, um, than the 5,000 square foot. There are a few, as you can see, this one right behind it is a little bit bigger. Um, and then there is, uh, there was one more. Uh, the one across the street over here is a little bit larger. But they were all pretty much the standard, if not maybe a little bit bigger.
So on, sorry.
I always forget to turn my microphone on.
The lot that-
The lot that is squared out, the red one. There's a proper, there is a structure on the property behind that, correct?
Correct, there is, yes.
That's an old photo.
And then the one next to it, the 721 is the same size, the 50 by 140.
Correct.
And the one on the corner is a little bit larger.
I believe it takes up-
It's like a two-size, isn't it? Like double it because it goes all the way back to the-
Yeah.
To Avenue H? Correct?
Yes, correct.
It's open.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Any more questions for Ray? Okay, thank you, Ray, for not done. Move on, Ray. Ray, hey, Ray. Thank you. Did you see those? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my. Is there any encroachments? Except the lot size.
Public comment on this one? Do we have public comment on this one?
I'm gonna open it for public comment.
We can start with the applicant if you'd like, Brian Vincent.
Afternoon, Brian, such your name for the record?
Uh, Brian Vincent, Clearview Custom Homes. Uh, like I said, just, um, building a spec home here. Was just, like Gary said, we're inside all the setbacks. Um, to me, I didn't look all around the, but if we can go back, can we go back to the, to all of the lots in the area? So 721, uh, I am in contract to build a house there for a lady. Um, it is within the 40% variance, but it's gonna be a nice house. And I'm also in contract to build, uh, 726 and 725, that's gonna be over a 5,000 square foot house, probably under roof. It's gonna be closer to 7,000 square foot. Uh, I understand that's two lots. And then, like I said, the one that's currently built there, Mr. West's house on 718, is a very nice house. Um, to me, with how I'm building that house there, it's gonna fit that whole block and complete that whole block of very nice houses. Um, again, I, I do understand the rules. I know I'm over there. It's gonna be a very nice house to fit the whole area and there's gonna be comps on that whole block that's gonna, that's gonna fit that. So, um, you know, with me being the setbacks, um, and, and also not trying to build something that doesn't fit in that area, um, I'm just trying to get the more bang for my buck in that area there.
I mean, everyone in-
And every one of these is custom-built?
Yes, ma'am, yep. There's gonna, so like I said, the Mr. West's house is already there and then I'll, that one's gonna be a spec house that I'm doing, uh, with, that I'm asking the variance for. That is a spec house that we're building there. It's gonna be a Spanish-style, like I said, very nice, very nice house. And then the other two are customs. Yeah.
Is this the only one you think will be asking for a variance?
Yes, it will be. Yeah. We already have the other two in permitting, uh, currently right now. And close on 721, the other one is still in, in permitting, which there was a variance asked for and, and so we're working through that right now on that one.
On which one, you're sorry?
Uh, on the double lot there, the one that front's Kenwood. But any other questions you guys have, I'd be happy to answer. But again, I'm just trying to, uh, fit with the whole area and, uh, and make a nice house there that completes that whole block. It's been vacant for a long time.
Yes, have you spoken to any of the people that were in opposition?
I have not. Um, like I said, I know she came up and said there was a group of people, uh, that was gonna come here and, and voice some concerns and, like I said, hadn't seen anything public record-wise until today. So I do not know what the issue is.
Yeah, but you haven't talked to other neighbors around there?
Uh, well, Mr. West is, is highly in favor of what we're doing there. He has, uh, he's looked at the plans, he's reviewed them. Uh, so has everybody else that I'm building for in the area, just to make sure everything fits.
Okay. Questions from that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment still open, next? Now it's your turn, huh? Alright, state your name for the record, please.
Liz Landers, I live at 111.
111.
Oh, 1111, sorry. And love it. Love the neighborhood and so glad I moved to San Angelo. My grandkids are close. But first, I wanted to say thank you all very much for giving us a month. We still weren't able, people still weren't able to get here. My neighbor who is an adjuster and an appraiser is in, has to be in, um, Odessa today, dealing with some more flood stuff. And my other neighbor is a country music singer and so she is getting ready to go on tour. And so it got me, it got to be me again. But I, we all wanted to tell you all thank you so much for being so considerate. It was a really hard time for us. I know I've had two family members who lost homes in the flood and so we were very thankful. So whatever you decide, it's okay. We are all just very thankful that y'all were so kind and understanding. So you've gotten a really good recommendation from us all around the neighborhood. But I will say that, um, we just feel like if, you know, there's a reason for all the zoning laws. I know myself, my house, either my house or the next door house wouldn't be permitted at this time because the other house is my property line. And so when houses are too big and too close together, you know, it's, it affects you in ways you wouldn't expect. I did not expect to have a neighbor who played blaring bass music till three in the morning that was shaking my bed. If my-
They didn't invite you over, right?
I know, they didn't even invite me. That would have been the nice thing to do, you're right. That would have been very kind.
Yes.
But anyway, well, maybe not at three in the morning, but anyway. So I've had experience of just two big houses, too close to, you know, too much, too close together. That's my feeling about it, but I get it. I, I don't care if they build a flying saucer across the street. My grandkids would love it. It's, that's not, we just feel like that everybody should have to follow the guidelines. Their laws for a reason and they were done for a reason. And it's to protect people, all the, you know, everybody. Not just one person or two people, it's to protect everybody. So anyway, I have to say thank you all very much.
Before we leave, can we look at the, uh, plot plan again, site plan?
She's straight across the street on the side of 111. Am I gonna look them forward?
No, look, Brian's moving. Okay, there's an alley.
Gary, if you're gonna turn around, can you please grab your microphone?
There's a, there's an alley there somewhere, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where, so is the alley here and you're over here?
Alley's to the side.
On the left side.
To the left?
Yeah.
The alley is to the left.
Okay, I'm facing, okay, when I'm facing, well, I was facing the plot plan, site plan.
She's most likely going to face their backyard, correct?
Yeah, go back to the site plan, I wanna look at the dimension.
She'll face the garage.
She'll face the garage, the side.
How much backyard do you have left there, Brian? You know, I can't read it, I can't just tell.
He has to come, yeah, yeah.
That'll face 20 feet.
20 feet, okay.
Yeah, we'll have to have you come up to, to-
And how wide's the lot?
It's 50 by 140 feet.
50 by 140.
140, okay. And you are, go back to the overall bird's eye view in the neighborhood.
I'm across the street.
She's literally on the side of 111, so she, we just clarified that-
No. Other street, no.
There's another 1111?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're facing the different lot line of what he's requesting.
I'm not immediately next to it, I'm across the street from it.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so we all are, I mean, the three of us that were concerned all live across the street. And, um, and we want something there. We definitely want something there, we're very excited. We think, we hope it'll be lovely. But I will tell you that if there was gonna be something you had never seen before, it was probably gonna be me involved, I don't know why that is. But anyway, we've, you know, we've made, I know, what can I say? I've had a whole life of that. Exciting things happen to me all the time.
That's good, you're never bored.
Oh, no, I'm not bored. So anyway, thank you and, um, I just, we just wanted you to know how we felt about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Still open for public comment?
Mr. Shumpert?
Thank you, ma'am, for the record, please, sir.
Jamal Shumpert, 2817 North Urban. Um, when I was listening to the comments, I, I could kinda tell that they wanna build it based off the aesthetics of the neighborhood. They wanna keep it the same. Uh, it's kinda a hard argument saying that you wanna keep it the same and, you know, it's such a big building. Uh, I think these things, lot area ratio probably should be preserved for people who are medically fragile or you have a older parent. So like, an older parent, uh, that you're, you're the caretaker of so that you could build your ADU right there and then that, that would increase your lot area ratio. I s, the things I've looked up and found, that's why they increase lot area ratios. I haven't found anything why they increase lot area ratios based off aesthetics, but I also haven't looked and it, it wouldn't seem like it would be based off aesthetics. You, you could make the argument that this was based off of money, uh, but like they said, in that neighborhood, everything's gonna, gonna be expensive, uh, and nice looking. So it, it isn't a money argument, it's a, an aesthetics argument. So it's kinda, it's hard for me to kinda understand why, you know, someone would know the rules and come up here and ask based off of look, instead of miniaturizing the house, maybe making it 2796, but the exact same style. Uh, I just don't want you guys to start setting a precedent that open land can come up here and get lot area ratio in there. There's not even a house on there and there's nobody medically fragile nor, no accessibility issues for those people. Uh, that's all I had to say. But the neighborhood isn't upset with it, so you're good to go regardless.
Again, thank you for your comment, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all we had.
I'm gonna close public comment, come to the board and let's talk.
So doing the math, a 40% would be, uh, a home no larger than 2,800 square feet. And this is a spec home. I think that we need to stay, in my opinion, we need to stay within the 40% size of the lot.
Uh, Brian, I got a question for you, or maybe. The, the 10- Oh, okay, well then we can discuss. Would the 10% increase make it equal to the current market of Santa Rita? Or is, I'm just asking, like-
You mean with a 10% decrease?
With 10% decrease? No, would the added 10%, 50%, as opposed to the 40% in the zoning ordinance, get it comparable to other homes in the neighborhood?
You can build a very nice 2,800 square foot home that would fit perfectly on that lot. And it would fit in the neighborhood.
Oh, I don't disagree, I just was curious, yeah.
Overbuilding, so another thing that Santa Rita is known for is the size of the lot. So you have a front yard, you have a back, backyard, side yards where this one, um, would have a small front and a small backyard.
Somebody was saying that one of the houses was 200 years old? Was somebody saying that?
Not on this block.
On one, okay, on one of that, it's 200 years old? Is any of that, is any of that historical or anything? That part of that neighborhood?
There's only certain houses and they actually are deemed in the historic archive where you have to apply for that. I know there's some, in, there's, there's a bunch of them in Santa Rita. I'm not familiar with those two blocks. I could be wrong, um, that would be deemed in there.
When staff did their research, we did not find one in that area that is deemed historic, at least through the city or through the state.
My other question is, is on this, miss, on the 718, which would be Mr. West. Did we, did we approve a variance for them to build?
I did not find one.
It looks, it's like a lot and a half.
Looks like the lot is larger.
It looks like a lot and a half on that one. There's a number 722, but I don't know if that's a line.
Is anyone in that block that has structures, have they been approved of variance?
That's the only thing that has a structure.
The one-
It's the only structure. 718 is the only structure.
This one over here.
Are you talking about this block right here?
I was talking about the main block.
Montecito Avenue H.
Why I was thinking it was the second block that I thought West was in.
726 West Avenue H does have an approved variance.
On which address?
The 726 West Avenue H with the double frontage. Yes, they do have a variance.
I thought it got brought to us before in the past. Those are all my questions.
I find myself saying- Um, I find myself in agreeance with the denial. I, I just don't see a house that big there.
My curiosity is the zoning laws were put in-
For a reason.
Well, that, but the, uh, the land was subdivided before the zoning laws. This is part of that area.
Say that again?
Was the land subdivided before the zoning laws came into effect? How many houses are grandfathered in non-compliance, bigger, you know, with the same situation? Too much house for the lot. Uh, Santa Rita was put in, what, in the twenties? And zoning laws came in, started in the fifties, late fifties. And so it's 30 years of building out there. I wonder how many are in compliance or not in compliance? It's a new point, no one knows. But I don't, I don't have any problem with allowing Brian to build a bigger house on that one in this situation. He was not, he's not violating any encroachments on anything. He's not asking for a smaller backyard and all that and the 40% is, is a rule, of course, but, uh, it can be. That's why with the zoning board, we can just make a justification for it. Try to help people out and make it work, but I'm only involved.
I don't disagree with you. I just, my only concern is we open ourselves up to doing the same thing moving forward with every request for the, those lots, any lots.
Well, how many, how many lots are left out there?
I'm, I'm just saying it in general.
No, out here, not part, I said that part of the world, I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think it has to do with the sing, new construction in single-family residential RS1, Santa Rita aside.
Okay, okay, okay.
So maybe a lot, no pun intended.
I, I don't see where we get-
Yeah.
The override on any of the allowed variance conditions. I, I just, I don't see a reason in there convincing-
Yeah, that's why I asked about the property values and the comp of the real estate. You know, rising tide floats all boats, does it increase property value? I, I don't know.[1756.36] Is the 10% gonna make or break the future sale of this house? And then Santa Rita has a comp? I don't think so, but that's where I was going, was number two there, so, the, the public interest, but couldn't get that answered.
Couldn't get it there, huh? All right.
Can you reopen public comment? Is that allowed?
Yes. They're asking, can we reopen public comment?
I don't have a problem reopening.
You'll have to make...
No. You, you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with it if you are.
I'll reopen public comment.
First of all, I'm hard hearing.
Yeah, Brian Vincent again. Ms. Landers, I'm just curious if you realize that your house, and I know you didn't build your house, but it's over the 40% as well, you're at 43%. So there's, there's a lot of older houses in there, we just pulled up the tax, the tax appraisal deal, and we're doing some quick math, um, her house is over the 40%.
I figured there was.
And, and the one that y'all just approved was changing from a 20-foot rear yard to a 5-foot rear yard? If you look at that site plan, there's, I, I don't have those numbers, because I don't know how much is the, oh, the new portion, but there's 591 remaining square feet to put that over the 40%.
Will you also state your name for the record?
My name's Lisa Cannon.
Thank you.
I, I think there's a lot in that area, obviously grandfathered-in, but I don't think this is uncommon in that area.
But the one that was just approved, does anybody know the, the square footage of that addition that was just approved?
Well, that was a church, it's kinda...
But it's rezoned. It's rezoned to RS1, so it's just...
That's something that's vetted, it was checked during the process, I can tell you that.
I think because it was built as a church and it was zoned...
It was built in...
I have no, I have no issue with it being over there, I'm just saying if you look, it's, it's well over the 40% too on the site plan.
We were just saying, there is a precedent for it already set.
It was an interesting question that came to my mind about the zoning and, and how old Santa Rita is, area, and things like that, but, you know, I'm just an old dinosaur.
Well, I hear you.
I know this stuff, and I just gotta say it, you know?
Well, and this one, we drew the plans and have...
Put it in the 20s, Santa Rita was an exclusive neighborhood for people, and you're putting in a bigger house that's gonna sell to a higher quality, lack of whatever, higher-quality person than me. Let's put it that way, they can afford something like that. And, and I just don't have any problem.
Well, I paid for the plans, I didn't realize over the 40%, which we, I've, I've asked for variances on the lake before on a house, I currently have that got one. But didn't realize it, just knew I was within the setbacks, and, um, anyway, like I said, I paid for plans, I'm gonna go back and redo that, but I just wanted to make note, like I said, you know, there's several that are grandfathered in the area that are well over the 40%.
Well, too bad you didn't get more, it would've showed to us, and that would've opened the board's eyes up a little bit to what's going on.
Sure.
Because I figured there was, I've shoot in the dark, but I figured there was, a lot of houses out there that don't meet the current RS1 code and are grandfathered-in. So that's, that's okay, that's then, now we're now, and somebody set the 40% rule. My, my, my thing is, somebody go in front of council and plan to get it changed, get that 40% change up it. But, you know, good luck.
Yeah, I know I'm doing one in Dallas, and I know they're at 50% in the city of Dallas.
Are they? In Dallas?
Yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe that's an archaic number now, I don't know. We're, they're trying to get into smaller lots, but more how, back, call it vacuum and stack them, type, around the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Dallas, and those flag lots, and affordable housing, that's what you get, smaller lots.
So, anyway.
Okay, anyway, just wanted to point that out, thank you guys.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna close public comment now, or keep it open for the, Ms. Landers?
I did, I did wanna say that staff did look at some of those houses around that he is speaking, most of them were built in the 30s, 40s, and 50s, um, before this zoning ordinance, so...
Yeah, I think the distinction, I mean, those are pre-existing structures.
This structure isn't built yet, so... Correct.
I understand. But there's not doing anything that's not already out there anyway, in violation, grandfathered-in type stuff, you know? And that's okay, I'm okay, I'm got it.
Well, I have to...
First time in my life, I'm okay.
Tell you, I did not move to Dallas. But I love, I, I love San Angelo, and my great-great-grandfather was the first mayor. So I've been here all my summers, and I have always loved Santa Rita, we walk our dogs, I know so many neighbors, because they stop and have a glass of wine on my porch. And I hope these guys will come do that, too.
Sure.
My house is 100 years old, and I am restoring the interior, trying to keep it there. I don't have a lot left from 100 years ago, but I'm trying to embellish that and enhance that. And I agree, that's what I said, my house, this could not, and I don't think it's actually my house, I think it was the next-door house that was built too close, because it's built after mine. But the one to the right of me, if y'all drive down Kenwood, the yellow house, that's my next-door neighbor, and they just moved in and had a new baby. And so we're all really just enjoying being there, we want them to come enjoy being there with us. But we do feel like that, um, part of the charm is that we're not giant houses on little bitty lots. I could've gone and moved out of town, and I might still. But it won't be, you know, so, I'm, I'm just saying that I think, um, there's something to be said for this, and it is the charm of the neighborhood. I, it is lovely. And y'all come, y'all come have a glass of wine, or iced tea, I can offer you wine, right?
Who was your great-great-grandfather?
What?
Who was your great, what was your great-grandfather?
Um, uh, Johan Prizer.
Okay, Prizer.
I also have the Nasswurries, I have all kinds of people in my background. My grandson says he thinks it's amazing that he has so many significant people. But if you go downstairs and look at the wall of shame, he's the first picture, and he's a little scary looking.
Wall of shame. Thank you.
My grandparents lived on Prizer as well. Are you closing public comment, or are you leaving?
Uh, if there's any more public comment, there'll be none, I'm gonna close public comment and go back to the, our board, and, uh, go from there.
The, the other thing I'd like to remind the board is, um, either way, if you do grant this, um, variance, then it is unlikely they'll be able to build a shed or an accessory dwelling unit. As, if you increase it already to 50%, it's very unlikely that they're gonna be able to increase it more to put a shed.
Good point, good point.
Just throwing that out there.
I'm sure the builder will do a deal to, do diligence and inform the buyer of that, right? He would. All right, any more motion? In a second.
So, I know that, um, we do have a lot of different properties around there that are larger, they are already built, um, they are older homes. I, my motion is going to be to deny, based on the, it's a new construction, it's a spec home, and I think it needs to stay within the guidelines that are in place.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second, let's go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed, nay, me? And everybody go aye but me?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so it passes, or not passes, or it's, it's five to one?
Yeah, since it was to deny, it passes, I mean, to approve a variance, you have to have 6-0, so, that passes.
Okay, does it pass? Sorry. Good luck. All right, moving on. Where's my agenda? Oh, division report. Item number four, we have a division report.
We don't really have anything except for, um, the planning department's been working really hard and doing a great job, there has been some recent promotions, um, I am now lead planner, and Austin is now senior planner, and Karen will be planner, um, in the next two months.
All right.
And we do have a planning tech, Arden, um, if you guys have not met her yet. And then our intern, this is her last week, Sarah Beth White, um, she goes back to Pittsburgh? Pittsburgh, to finish her planning degree.
Okay, that's nice.
That is all we have.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, item number five, follow-up and administrative issues. I guess we covered that. Any administrative issues we need to talk about? Okay? Leave me alone. The next, the next regular meeting of zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, September the 8th, 2025, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room.